...this Monday, or actually, it is Monday, July the 10th, 2017, at 7:07 PM. For work, Mr. Perry, you can call the row please.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
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 Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
There's four.
Thank you, ma'am. If you would please rise and we will begin our meeting tonight with a prayer of our Pastor and Plenary for this community about church called "I Pledge the Liches" by Chief Lawrence. Ladies and gentlemen, let's pray. God, thank you so much for this gathering and for this city. Father, we pray for this time, we pray for our city. God, we pray for our leaders here. God, we pray that you would give them great wisdom and discernment in their decisions, in their leadership, in their service to our people here. Father, we just ask you to continue blessing on our town and our people and our community and all the things that we experience here because of your goodness and grace in our lives. We pray to find us to be a people who are kind and caring and civil and serving. So, Father, we ask your blessings on this meeting and ask your blessings on the city. We ask your favor on our lives. We thank you for your grace and your goodness. In the Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we see that. At this time, I'd like to ask the council to look at three minutes from our June the 5th council meeting. Does he have a motion to adjourn those minutes?
I think we should adjourn next.
Second. You have a motion and a second?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
There is no apology report from my office this evening to adjourn. We are here attended. We are at the recognitions and acknowledgements and we have one very special acknowledgement that I would like to take care of at this time. First of all, I'd like to read some information to you because I don't think we can drag it out of Officer Fisher as we tried, so I'm going to read a little bit of information. While working a traffic accident, Officer Josh Fisher, in the course of his duties, interacted with a witness to a hit-and-run accident. Through police polite and genuine conversation, he felt that the mother needed a little help providing for her children. She was moved from Colorado to Arkansas, having recently arrived to our community. Josh felt the need to assist her and offered to provide groceries for her and her family. After he completed his accident investigation, he then accompanied this new Arkansin to Walmart, Josh with his own money, provided $200 for groceries and diapers for this family. Additionally, through a call for service, Officer Fisher found that a disabled vet in our area was not being properly taken care of, and on several nights, Josh purchased dinner for the vet and delivered it to his apartment. Furthermore, he took the steps necessary for future care. If you read or watch the news, a lot of times, these type of things don't make the news, but we certainly want this to. It came to my desk, so we want to make sure that the community knows about this. I'd like to personally recognize and thank Officer Fisher for an outstanding job. Josh's extraordinary effort brought great credit, not only to the city of Greenwood, Greenwood Police Department, and all the citizens of our community, and his action reflects what it truly means to be an Officer of the Year, which Josh has already received. So, on behalf of the citizens and everyone concerned or anybody in this area, we'd like to thank Officer Josh. If you'll step forward, please. Did I tell you why you're here tonight? Okay. I didn't think so. You probably would've found some excuse. This is from the city of Greenwood, a certificate of honor awarded to Officer Josh Fisher in recognition of the extraordinary act of kindness in giving above and beyond the call of duty during an extraordinary, everyday, an ordinary, everyday situation. This is 10th day of July, 2017, March with official seal of the city of Greenwood. I signed it, and I need the city clerk to sign it for us so we can make it official. That's something I forgot. There you are, sir, and we are proud of you and proud to have you on our board. I actually considered having Chief Tasey if he wouldn't speak. We are certainly proud of you and what you do, and we're proud of all of our policemen that just continue to make us look good and great, and we appreciate you, appreciate you for your leadership. Community reports, running to the South Besty Kenny Boys and Girls Club, I don't think Kenny's here this evening, but you have a written report, I believe in your packet. If you have any questions regarding that, you can always forward those to Tammy, we'll get you an answer from Kenny. Do they not have one? Okay. Well, leave me short of any questions, okay? Or S R C A? Okay. Parks Commission?
Um, you should have one.
From Lisa?
Yeah, I did. Did you not? If you don't have one, I'll give you one.
I know Parks Commission's here, and I thought I saw some of their students. Do you have any questions for Parks Commission, Dylan? Somebody want to ask? Also, Harry Ramsey Consulting, I believe Tracey McKinnon is here. Would you like to give a report? I know we haven't one turned in, but just if they had questions?
Yeah, Gary's asked me to be here. I'm not sure exactly what was in the report, and I'm actually with Western Arkansas Planning Development, so I don't know if he had anything something about us in the report or...
I think he was talking, basically, I think maybe the main thing is the replacement or if there's a replacement of G I F money, if you know anything regarding that, the Governor of the House publicly, you want that or...
You know, still what we're doing is that there won't be any more G I F money. Of course, that can always change with each legislative session, but as of right now, you know, we don't have those funds at our office, so, you know, as a district, we're just here to serve Greenwood in any way that we can. Any questions or any projects you have that you need additional information on, or if you ever have a project come up and you're not sure where to go for funding for that project, just, you know, always just call at our office, you know, your plan dues to us as well, and so we are definitely here to serve Greenwood in any capacity.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Any questions? Michael Jean from M H Construction, progress update?
Mr. Council, Mr. Derry, Mr. Hammy. I've laid a project budget update on each year's desk, and really, the only thing we had to report, we're just about to wrap up everything on the street department building next door. We had a few, we included $7,600 in contingency in the project. We had a few miscellaneous changes along the way, and those are listed down at the bottom. One of those was not, you had, you guys had requested at the last council meeting was to look at the addition of masonry along the north side, try out $20,000, and we're going to recommend, because of the way the building's built, the fence, everything, that you not proceed that now, that would've been better served while we were, had everything torn off, but it's really going to be a waste of your money, I believe, at this point. So, I'm recommending you do not follow through with that one. The other items are actually already completed, so, as you can see, our total is 79, 49, so we're about $349 over budget, so we'll need to add that in the form of a change order to the contract to complete everything with the contract out there. In addition to that, we also talked about omitting the landscaping for now, and this has to do with the weather. Right now, we were going to plant some trees along the recycle center, and it's a little too warm for replanting some large trees right now, and take three to plant them, and then those, we can still do it, but we're recommending that, just kind of wait for the fall for that, and then Simon has agreed he'll just add that to his couple work later in there, so we would, guess really, guess we'd need to get the planning department to agree to that at some point to complete the, so that we can be complete with our portion of the work for now, but with an understanding that the landscaping would go in the fall if it's a little bit cooler. If you want us to go ahead and proceed with all the landscaping now, that final change order would be 2664, because we include the cost of the landscaping in that, but if you take it out, we won't have that. That's really at your discretion, but it's my recommendation that we wait, just because it's hot now, and it's going to get hotter over the next few weeks, and the tree board's already been out there a little bit aside, made some recommendations for various types. Simon already has that, Mayor already has that, so we've got plans, so they know what to do, and they're part of planning, so. Any other question? We'll prepare that final change order for 349, $349, and then we'll close the project out.
My goal is correctly, though, why would you deny that? I mean, what's the reason why we don't want to do this?
Well, you currently are, you're going to have to tear out the work that's already completed to make that happen. Had we done that during the construction, when we had all the siding torn off the building and all the walls torn apart, that would've been more beneficial, and I think the cost would've actually gone a little bit less, so you're paying a premium for having to go and remove your existing siding that you just put on and replace it, that's, you know, it's just a few days old. Like I say, had we done this three months ago, it would've been a different story, but we always talked about just doing the two visible sides of the side, the other sides of the building are fenced in, it's a metal building, the other building's behind it, are metal buildings. We also can't do the entire length of that side, we can only go about 70 feet down because the back portion is 72, and there's no interior wall, so if we put masonry in there, we'd have to build a wall on the other side as well, which probably would've made it about $40,000 total to do that, to go all the way to the end, so this cost is only to go just to the end of the actual building, not the length of the portion.
Do you have this, council, any, that, that perspective at the top?
Yeah, that shows you how far down we could take the masonry without doing an extra wall, without building an extra wall. And again, it's, you know, it's behind the fence, it's a screen fence, and they've got equipment hard packed there, it just, it didn't seem very practical at this point in the project to go back and do that work, but again, it's council's decision, so if you want that work added, or if that one had, then add that to the contract.
I just think it should've been done with a vehicle, it does nothing, looks good. It looks good, I mean, it looks great, I'm just, I just think it should've been done with a vehicle. That's what we're talking about on the north side.
North side, the side that's inside the fence where the recycle center's located.
What's highlighted in red there would be, that's what we're talking about, how hard it is.
What's highlighted in red is what's included in this cost. If we were to go all the way to the end of the building, this cost would increase.
I don't know if you can break that, I mean, I just, I just, I figure out what the difficulty was, because I must have just done something.
I must have done it too, I don't know how, it's only just the two visible walls.
I know it's behind the fence, but you hear about siding, but it's very apt to be happening, and it just doesn't finish to me, I mean, it looks great, the whole building looks three hundred times better than it did, it's just, I don't know, just my, I don't know.
I agree with Lance, but it looks better, it looks so much better than it's ever looked before, but I wish it had been done in the beginning.
I'm good with, I'm just curious.
Again, that's your decision, the contract or the back.
Why is this so far? I have to come back and do that much more, because we don't have to do it whole book?
Yeah, that's very happy.
So, the council members, do you have those? I just don't know how, how to dissect that, all of us, they're going to physical walls, but I think, I think at this point, it is too, too large. I think, I think it's exactly why it didn't plan, because it was not visible, but, I mean, you gotta get it formed, the fence is just moved, and it would be visible, but I think at the time, they were just trying to get it, not done as cheap.
We're trying to get the best time, we're trying to economize as much as possible, and we talked about they have to brick all the way out, and we decided to reduce it to that three and a half feet, and only do the two sides that are visible.
And I agree, it looks awesome, I'll tell you, my wife may have been just, she said, I didn't know it looked so bad until we did that, so it looks, it looks great.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Imagine the rest of us, so, thank you. Assistant forum, at this time, if anyone, we, I didn't have anybody sign up this evening, but as always, I'd like to remind you or let you know if you didn't know when you came in, we would still give you an opportunity to speak at this time to the council, it's an open forum, you have about two and a half, two minutes to speak, if you want to do that, any issue on your mind at all? Going tonight? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You missed the water waste.
Oh, I'm sorry, I sure did. I put a check on water waste for our commission. Mr. Rattery is not here this evening, so I guess no one's here to speak on their behalf, but I think so too, Chris. Any questions or thoughts or anything to do with that report? Since the new tank is in operations, if any issues around here... Not to my knowledge, here's a man who can speak to that.
We've turned it on, there's a air problem, but it's been a little bit, it's grown up a bit.
Any other questions or anything to mention? Sorry, skip that. Okay, additions, we actually have a couple, I know of three. Number 15 is regarding our vacant lots, mowing our vacant lots and that sort of thing, I guess that's what you want to title it. Number 16 would be animal shelter agreement. And number 17, I'm speaking on that fire department, I think you have just a fire department permit fund to transfer permit funds, is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Yes. 15 is mowing and vacant lots. Were there any other agenda additions?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Command Center.
Oh, yes. Number 18 with Command Center, Police Department Command Center.
Orphans West.
Correct. What was 30,000 dollars placed? And what was 70,000, Fire Department, transfer of funds, permit funds, we don't know if you know, I think today, I suppose.
Resolution.
Resolution. House, House, continue. Okay, there's no further agenda additions, we'll go right into the old business. It's Iowa sanitation contract review, we talked about this a little bit in the past, I don't really think we have anything new to offer you. What I'm going to ask of the council, if you entertain the idea of a study session on this topic alone, I think we've got some new interesting ideas to put forward. I know Mr. Kenny, the Parks Department's been working a little bit, and so has, of course, Daniel McDaniel on the, on the decree for the contract. I think we can get that all settled down, and I don't, I think the council meeting would be a little tough to do that, because I think it takes some time. And if you would entertain the idea, let's call it study session, as soon as we could, and promise it wouldn't last all night, if I can make that count. Does that sound doable, maybe next week? Tammy, do you have a schedule on, is any evening other than what's commissioned or somebody's meeting in here? Is there a night next week that someone, someone can't meet?
Cannot be numbered, never will.
Two days.
Two days to the 18th? Sound doable? Six o'clock? Okay, let's do that. Six o'clock to the 18th, study session on sanitation, contract. Six o'clock. And you know, our current contract is up on September the 1st, so we need to make sure that we got everything lined out and look forward to it and try to do.
Is there people?
Yes, sir.
Was there?
Okay.
Oh, I lost that.
Okay. Let's take care of one. Six o'clock. Okay. Recycling trash pickup discussion, there he is right back there, I know you had, I had a visit from the, I'm sorry.
That's Virgil with M S G.
Virgil, thank you. I was going to say Richards, remember him? But Virgil from M S G, we talked a little bit in my office about recycling, that sort of thing, I don't know if you wanted to address the council regarding that?
Ah, yes, I agree.
I was about to do that, just state your name, Kevin.
My name is Virgil, I'm with M S G Waste. Thank you, council. Thank you. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the recycling. Here, about three weeks ago, a month, we started getting some phone calls about the recycling, and some very unhappy residents, and once I got them calmed down, I started asking the customers or the residents of where they live, and they were, they explained to me that it was the city of Greenwood. And so, after getting around 30 phone calls or so, what I've done is I went and started to look around at some recycling companies, and actually have secured a recycling company that is ready to accept the city of Greenwood recycling immediately. On this, I visited with the mayor and also have given him a heartfelt letter of some of the recycling company as well, so are there any questions or anything I can answer?
I think, I think more than anything, thank you for coming, is to make council aware of what we're looking into, how serious this needs to be, and make sure we cover our bases as best we can. And I think I saw, Mr. Al, Mr. Altus is here too, so I'll give you an opportunity to speak if you, if you want. We want to, we want to be all-knowing as we possibly can about this as we move into the end of this contract, so just give everybody a chance to speak and ask you questions if they want.
You have a little copy of the contract.
I believe you have copies, so, well, we don't know, we have it handed out because we know that we're still tweaking, and I have a guy with you, I should, I've already got with you, but there's some stuff in there that we need to look at, so I've been a little weary of actually handing one out.
I think you guys want to look at.
I think we have growing, yeah, that's my...
You have our simple smart stuff.
No, I'm not. We can do that, make sure Mr. Altus has one too, obviously, so. Well, I guess, obviously, we know all the other kind of concerns of the calls, or the calls you were getting about the recycling.
Well, the calls that I was, that I was actually getting about the recycling is that the recycling was actually going to the landfill, you know, with all the, everything's been going on with the city of Fort Smith, you know, it kind of raised a lot of questions in a lot of different hands and things of that nature, so after receiving a lot of phone calls and, and again, asking the residents where they're from, town of Greenwood, and I've gotten a lot of, a lot of other information and things of that nature that, that these folks are telling me that the recycling has been going to the landfill. One thing with this company is that I have secured this recycling company, we'll be able to give you the council's monthly reports each and every month on the recycling program. But that's where this, that's where it all started. Once it started, I had contacted the mayor and let him know of the situation before, and kind of got a hand and started escalating to something that probably didn't escalate that quickly.
I know what that means, that Fort Smith, this become issue at Fort Smith, you know, I guess, where is our recycling at it? Is it going in the proper place? Well, I think, I think Mr. Altus, I'll let him impress that, he's saying he's here on behalf of Iowa sanitation, so, and I don't, I mean, there's no intention of getting into a...
Oh, no, none at all, just, you know, just a...
Information, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
And I would, I would say too, if you want to stop by tomorrow, or email Tammy, or if you suppose, we probably should do with Mr. McDaniel, say, give you a copy of that work in progress of our contract, or something, you know, we need to invest in it, so, let you take a look at it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Sure.
Mr. Altus, if you'd like to, just done? Oh, you got the only...
I'm getting, I'm just, I'm sorry, here's some receipts, there's not a lot of recycling in, you know, we pick up twice a week recycling, and there's not much, a ton and a half, two tons, you know, it's not a lot, too, but we have receipts, this is from Smurk Capital, and this is a company that I used to own, I used to be the, you know, recycling business, and starting in 78, actually, oh, in 77, and I owned three plants in Greenwood, for, you know, one city, Fort Smith, and available, and we recycled about 4,000 tons a month, which is 12, 18 years a day. The third side recycling, there's just not a big market for it, if you've read any of the Fort Smith papers, you know, they had a lot of problems with it, but I owned the building that these people work in and work out of, and so we really, I had a problem, and they've taken our recycling, no problems. As I've said, there's not much volume to it, but I don't see a problem.
I'm sorry, are they, and we talked about this in my office, and then you said, are they, the building, are they separating their recycling anywhere, is that how that's working?
We have a, yeah, they have, they have...
In my house, I use recycling bins, and I just put everything that I want recycled in there, and it goes. Other people are asking questions, so I just want to make sure.
Right, yeah, what's going to take 17 hours?
Okay.
But when I was in the recycling business, well, the city of Fort Smith, it would interest me, but as soon as I sold out to the company that CSI was, sold out to Smurk Capital, then they started, I told them, you know, the city of Fort Smith contracts would be fine, they're going to go after it, so they did, and so they did business with Fort Smith for a long time, and they had picking stations and everything, and just like I had when I was retired, in 82, I had to go plant, and so it's not a problem, they, you know, they recycle it, and, you know, of course, a lot, you know, there's two sides there pointing, a lot of people throw a lot of their garbage in with the recycling, and so it's, it's not, it's not 50/50, but it's close to 50/50 garbage and recycling. Any other questions?
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, planning building, ordinance for building, request for this 13-10, what you got for you, take a reading.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Perry. This is the ordinance, the second reading of the commercial guidelines, the one that had in the heading that it recommended, we want to get the recommendations out, and just refer to it in our commercial guideline ordinance. Everything else in the ordinance, things of science, and so, like I said, it's just changed in the heading.
Is there, is there any, do we need to be quick about this? Is there something coming up that we need to...
No.
If council isn't mine, I'd like to take the secretary in 30 days, I haven't had time to work on something else, and Tammy's work on, and I'd like to let the, let the Agony Development Council get it, if it's not hurried, you don't have a hurry.
No, I haven't.
I'd like to take it to secretary in 30 days, or in a...
We have the commercial project coming up that fits everything, and so we're in good shape.
Because at this point, it's just the name.
Yes. There've just been few, there's some people that, you know, they said, well, these are guidelines, and that doesn't mean that you can normally, you know, you just follow them what we're getting, you do, and so that's why we want to take the guideline, just like...
It sounds very regulatory, yes. Yeah, council isn't mine, I'd like to take it in 30 days, so I'd make a motion to take... Yeah, council isn't mind, I'd like to take it in thirty days, so I'd make a motion to take it to secondary in thirty days.
And is it, as far as you're dealing with a, a prompt title, or? I just, if I mean, or is there a certain aspect that you want?
Certain, certain aspect that?
Well, I guess I just, one thing I just wanted to mention, you know, it's kind of a nitpicking thing, but in the ordinance, you know, we say that we're going to, you know, the real commercial guidelines, I think it's a good deal, but adoption of commercial design. And I know, and hell, and then the document, it says commercial development design. I don't know if it would be consistent all the way through there, or, you know, if that's not.
I would, I would, I would hear all that discrepancy. Was that not called?
What?
Are you asking who's your fault?
Yes. Silly question.
So your, your point is just that it's called the same thing all the way through, you know?
Yeah, it's good, it's true, we will make that, that data, like, goodness, thanks.
Sorry, Sonny, I just, you over yourself. Okay, we can make the slack hop block here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion to take it for thirty days, thirty minutes. Second reading. Second. I'm sorry, second. Councilor Siri.
Brown?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
You're up again.
Before we go to that, I'd like to respond to it. Councilman Brown's comment there, the reasons behind that was, I called him in Hickory the other day, he said he was buying a hot water heater.
Oh, really? It's already, it's already not on?
That's what I thought. Well, he had to send me back.
Okay.
This, this is the ordinance repealing replacing ordinance three sixteen, coming regulations. This is the ordinance that had been amended over twenty-something times. And we're, we're just bringing it all together and renaming the ordinance with all the changes made into it so that Charla and the planning division and everybody else doesn't have to back it. All the amendments, make sure we're, uh, moving, making up top of rules.
I'm going to motion for a second reading.
Second. Motion second, second reading.
Brown?
Yes.
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 Dan? Siri?
Yes. Yes.
Order in the ordinance, repealing and replacing the ordinance three sixteen, declaring emergency.
Thank you. Number twelve. Waterway Board Commission, vote.
Just a second reading, I have to thank some contestants for the part of the monitoring, I have number five, so we're number four. Look to all the ordinances that we're reviewing. Good pinch, I could suggest this for the part of the monitoring. Have any questions, I'll gladly answer.
Can you imagine with this one, from secondary about that one?
Second. Motion second.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
In ordinance, repealing ordinances four twenty-seven, one eighty-eight, five hundred and five, five hundred and nine, nine zero dash twelve, zero zero eight, zero two dash thirty, seven, 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 eleven, twelve dash zero six, ten dash zero seven, declaring emergency in accordance.
Can this be used now with this water commission policy?
Yes.
There is an emergency clause on some of these, but.
Oh, there were.
On the line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, fully. Number six, a few part discussion. I really have nothing further to report on that, but the people that are interested in this are still pursuing it. Obviously, not to be planning a lot of anything, kind of like what we're talking about on landscaping. We kind of missed the time on that, but we're still looking at one of the lines on the main streets and possibly turn that into a beauty garden, kind of see that go. Was anybody here to discuss that at all? Okay. Moving to number seven, new business. Parks Department, President, amend budget, for ACF for extension period.
Arch's foundation was very gracious recently and sent us a check for sixty thousand dollars that was not anticipated, so we did not include that in our two thousand seventeen budget. Check is already here and been deposited. It involves blessing that they've been a bunch of spend it. This will be a trail extension, main priority is going up. Main street, make a loop to Bell Park and then connect all the communities and schools to the main right system.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Altis.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Before we call for the vote, actually, it's hypo, this is the petition. It should, it looks like it has a quote, it's supposed to send in the description for seven, six thousand, six hundred, it's supposed to be capital, purpose projects, but it does not say at all in that.
We already have that line out in our budget, it was just adjusted.
It does say that number, I just would like to get to read, that is.
I'm waiting, yes, complimentary, your second.
Brown?
Yes.
Doctor Johnson?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kenny, appreciate your continued work on that. I know that's important, and it's important to our, our community to give us trail points, it's a major, big improvement. Mrs. City Park Trade, your report.
So, this is the twenty fifteen legislative audit report that has been released. I apologize for the delay and our audit slightly, but anyway. You should each have received a copy of this, mayor and council, State Park. And it is state law that we review this over a regularly scheduled meeting with the governing body. And then it's reflected in findings and informations in the action plan. I'm here to read. Is that okay if I didn't pop here? You want me to get down there?
You said up there.
Okay. All right, so there were six actual finding on this report. The audit indicated that offices of Park Trade, nervous, short term, complete, substantial, and part. There was a non-compliance of state law, except for the county practices noted in the office of mayor. And the first one is management had no process that periodically reviewed approved data changes, and additions, without adequate supervisory oversight of changes to information. Unauthorized or unauthorized transactions are less likely to be detected. I'm just gonna go ahead and respond with, with the mayor's response to that. Our response is our entire legislative on it. The response from the mayor on that is he will work to develop a standard operating procedures list, which is not currently in place for the director of finance position. Finding number two, there were no documented remote access security policies. Failure to establish and communicate inadequate remote access to the security policy could result in unnecessary exposure or misuse of the information resources. Mayor's response to that, the finance department has formulated a remote access policy and will have the city council review and approve the same. I believe that the mayor is gonna play on presenting some of these in the next meeting. Number three, there was no wireless security and use policy failure to establish and communicate an adequate wireless security and use policy could result in the unnecessary code usage, misuse of information resources. Response to that is the finance department has formulated a remote access policy that includes wireless communications coverage and will have the city council review and approve the same. Finding number four, there was no formally documented approved business continuity plan. A disruption in technology and automated information systems could have a certain impact on critical resources and affect essential services. Mayor's response to that, the city of Greenwood formulated an official disaster recovery plan in twenty sixteen, approved by council and has in place backup recovery majors to continue operations beyond the disaster. See attached city of Greenwood resolution number one sixteen that charted to provide. Finding number one. It is, finding number five is, is one that we get, I believe, the internal controls. With the amount of employees we have, you know, the segregation of duties, we get this one every single time. We've been told that we can't hire people to satisfy that. So, response is, as always, that we segregate the financial accounting duties to the best of our ability and the size of our capacity. And the city does not have funding available to hire additional staff necessary to segregate duties to the full potential. Finally, the last, number six, the city paid a per diem meal allowance totaling twenty-six hundred dollars, eight, twenty-six hundred and eighteen dollars to a police lieutenant attending a seventy-seven day training program, although the registration form indicated all meals will be provided to attendees. And the mayor's response to that, the city will update its financial policy of three to include provision that meals served at conferences, seminars, etc., will not be permissible as reimbursable expenses under the city's per diem formula expense policy. And so, if you, yes, agree with the city's responses and plan of action, this motion has made its end, set that report. Any questions?
Make a motion to set the report.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to set the report.
Is Brown?
Yes.
Doctor Johnson? Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Waterway Board Commission put the resolution to transfer funds to our thing.
Resolution to transfer three hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars of city sales tax applied towards the two new tanks of work parking. It's, I think, the original is three hundred fifty thousand. We've already used a small portion of that in the land acquisition, so three thirty-nine seven hundred to a completely allocated difference from what we borrowed, of course, to help the expansion, what the cost price was.
Make a motion without resolution.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Is Brown?
Yes.
Doctor Johnson?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
Number ten, Parks Department resolutions amend budget to Bell Park road overlay.
We must have been at Bell Park in the last five, six, seven years, realizes that road is in terrible shape. We also realize that the funds that have been set aside for road repair in the city are limited and might be used elsewhere, so the Parks Commission got together and decided they would like to buy all of the asphalt to do that overlay at the city street department, use their equipment, use their manpower, Parks manpower, put a new, two inch, I think it's what, get the two inch overlay on that road. We'll go from the Bell Park entrance, which is there by the new sign, all the way up, make a loop, come back down, that'll put the color just going in, and it'll kind of fix up all the drainage issues.
Make a motion to adopt, Doctor.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Is Brown?
Yes.
Doctor Johnson?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel? Siri?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
They actually have the money.
Kenny, I think that's a good, great example, what's two partners working together. To a good conclusion, appreciate that.
He's our guy.
He is our guy.
Yeah.
I believe Mr. Wiley is planning along without any, the city also planned, and you blacked out for me, about two minutes, is that right? So, we're not just doing the part of the road, so, but technically, that's not the part to do, so I think it's pretty problematic. Probably pretty bad, but. Number eleven is a resolution to purchase property for West Side Fire. It's called Substation, I think Chief had some, whatever with that. Not calling it Station Number Three, so let's do this real quick while he's in the room. I'm kidding. But this is, I know Chief will want to speak on this. This property, I hope you have the map there in your packet. I believe it's what Chief handed out just a little while ago. It's where Mount, or Denver, Denver, Denver crosses seventy-one, becomes Mount Zion. It would be the, the property immediately to your right, corner of Mount Zion and highway seventy-one, where currently is a commercial building residing on that property. It's a couple of years old, excuse me. The purchase price is to include that building and the five acres that it sits on. It is not on sear, it has sear's system, specific tank system, has James Ford water. The plan is to go with future of Station Three there, the building that's there, and I think we have our approval from our city attorney that the city can own rental property and utilize that to offset the cost of the property itself. It has the potential of bringing in twenty-four hundred dollars a month. All four offices leased out, or the gas price on the lease are six hundred dollars per office. I believe the last time I talked to the realtor, two of the offices were already leased, and they thought they had two more ready to. The only thing this does not cover, and I'm not sure that we need to mix it in with it, but obviously, there'll be details to be worked out, who's in charge of the business. Who's gonna maintain the building, we have asked kind of through the, through the realtor, the cost of maintenance, so we know. We're certainly going to this with some, you'll have overhead on the building and that sort of thing, but I think we can work through all those details to a positive end. So, any questions and or thoughts? The fire board, Chief, you may want to step forward just in case, but I met with the officers in the fire department, which I think is their executive committee. We met a couple of times on this, and they unanimously asked us to pursue it, we need to pursue this, so I did the, going back and forth with the realtor, if you will. And the end result was three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, three hundred eighty-six, five hundred dollars. I believe the resolution refers to eighty-six thousand, five hundred, is that correct? Coming out of state social use tax power fund and remain, the remainder, three hundred thousand will be financed. We got, we did, we got. Sorry?
Hundred fourteen thousand is this. I'm here. All the rules must be in here, I don't have it here.
That's interesting. Yeah, well, that's, that's, he said before. But it was three hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred total, eighty-six thousand five hundred paid, and then three hundred to finance. It's an act.
Going to dedicate the sales tax to making the payments again.
Correct.
The people's power fund.
Correct, yes.
Is that the city limits?
It currently is not, we would like to bring in.
Part.
Part it is.
Do you look at the, the map?
The back, please.
Five, six, seven, you know, the, the L is in the city limits, the little section there, but the building is not in the city limits.
And that part that you're calling city limits, and is that low?
No.
It's not, it's not right there.
We're gonna charge ourselves there a little bit.
Yeah, this is actually history, yeah, history.
Yeah, we didn't want to get into them.
This property doesn't include those little four offices you talked about.
Correct.
Yeah, so that, that building had been on the layer though, they moved over, it's about three point five seven.
So that building would include three hundred and eighty-six, so.
Yeah.
Oh, that. And it has an entrance on the northbound lane.
Actually, on the southbound.
Southbound lane on seventy-one.
It has two entrances.
And then, of course, on the Mount Zion, which would be the lights.
Which we would. The other one will be some future, you know, pull in there, come down, how they can fill the line from that end.
This kind of pulls toes, I, I believe it's a good, great step toward.
We were looking at, I think we were looking at another piece of property, we were talking to, we were talking to council about it for the past couple of months, but it kind of ended up, it looked like it was gonna cost other parks as much money as it's gonna cost us, and we didn't want to do that. Our board didn't do that. This right here was like, we got access to the streets and the supply and, you know, same, that same highway. Avoid any of this purchase and move on, we'll have to, well, another board's, you know, a discussion and hopefully not putting a burden on other parks.
So, we need to figure out what the one hundred fourteen thousand is to date, let me ask you one.
Mr. Derry, has your corrections for that?
Yeah, I'll correct that to read eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars sixty-one, instead of one hundred and eighty-five. And then, fire to the, where the city social needs tax.
Or, but where it came from, or not?
Well, sometimes we're editing, or, you know, and then sometimes it's kind of, we're making it easier.
I'd like the word to be changed to Fire Station Three, you talked about West Side Station.
In the title and then in the body? Not Substation, but Fire Station Three. You want a West Side Fire Station Three?
Fire Station Three. Well, I'm all for this, I'd like a motion to pass a resolution, but I might, like, edit, or maybe do so, but. I'll just get the annexed building for the rest of the property, it's a new.
I'll second your motion.
My annexed board of motion, I guess.
Right, sure, well, I just asked our city attorneys if we could buy it without meeting them again, so, yeah, I, I agree with you.
We'll see what happens.
Okay, so we have a motion in second to.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Officer Council?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Derry?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Adams?
Thank you.
How about the future property, or what?
I believe so too, yes. And again, I'll just say this is a good, really a nice step toward the goal of what we all agreed our, our city social needs tax, so, that's a big deal. Uh, number twelve, this is a resolution, more resolution to amend the budget for Ron's Eagle Sculpture. You probably already are hearing about this, and we haven't got yet, yes, uh, we talked about this quite a lot, we just kind of learned that we, we got to clean up maybe some things that we didn't do. Uh, so, we need to, we have a resolution, we have a resolution in your packet to amend the budget for that. I'll get you updated, we are, we have made our second payment, uh, thanks to the, uh, law, no, not law, did he? Law's made, donation, reservation, it comes in from the council, and we are asking for a change, six hundred sixty-seven dollars coming from city contractors to make that second payment. And then I will come back to you, as I reported earlier, the third, I have, uh, I have exceeded any notices or anything, art donations, I know the A and B Commission is waiting for that, and they're, they have it on there, it's intended for August to, looking, see if they, what they can do toward this also.
Make a motion to adopt, Mr. Derry.
Second. We have a motion in second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Officer Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Dang?
Yes.
Mr. Derry?
Yes.
Mr. Duster?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Number thirteen is, again, just, my, didn't get it done earlier, we should have included authorized the Ron's Eagle Sculpture project, uh, new contract. It's set up as I described, you.
I don't have that go back.
No, that go back.
There's down, there's, I don't have the contract.
Second.
So, we are, we, we have, what we did was, I went back and looked, and I didn't feel to do that, but we, what we did was agree on the way the committee did, and we just, something just slipped, didn't get down to it. You need, would you like to see that? Okay, that first and second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. From fourteen, Police Department Retirement of a Canine Officer, Tina.
Mayor Council, Mr. Derry, Mr. Handel. Uh, first off, I want to apologize, last week, I think I still recall so disturbed, it's probably unneeded, but I did do that. I, I thought I made it clear, certainly during the interview, and I had one of the posts that this matter had not been brought to you, guys, as a matter of fact, you probably learned about that same day. We came to that decision after, after Officer Wise, and decided to move on to a different job. Several reasons for, I think, retirement, first, uh, the two of them obviously went through a lot last year together, and, uh, when it comes to bonding a dog with a new handler, there seems to be issues with that. Also, with injuries Kena received, uh, we've already seen, uh, I think that's seen a little bit of change in behavior, uh, where she was touching area of her wounds, which takes away a, a big portion of, I think, what she can do part and part as far as public relations, and build that bond with kids, and, uh, being able to go to schools and such. So, you're taking that, or legally taking again, that more, and trying to pair her up with someone that she most likely will not bond with. Uh, watching Dennis, uh, for these handlers, so those become more than just a dog, more than just a partner, or a family member, if you look at this Facebook page, uh, at break, all the pictures, Kena's in there, uh, with Dennis, so. I, I think there's no many issues trying to bond her with a new handler, we may be looking at possibly two years more of, of active service work, she was able to do that. In our current position, uh, we are three officers down, and looking over, you know, our personnel, it's gonna be a while before we can send somebody away for training, even try to, even if we were to get new canine, we're gonna be a little ways off from that, on top of not having the funding for a new dog. There's just so many negatives to trying to bring her back and take her away from the lives of the family, that I certainly would request, and I think the mayor supports also that we retire from them. And due to, I think, liability of, of Kena going to anybody but Dennis, with her being a bite dog, uh, would it be, and we don't think they're city property, where she is when it comes to black and white, that anybody taking Kena, I, I think there would be some kind of liability if she were to bite the new handler. If we had an auction for, and I hate saying city property, because, uh, we don't think of that way, she's an officer, but if somebody were to take her through, uh, auction, I think, uh, once property's unusable in cities, we're supposed, the mayor's supposed to take it to the dump, we're certainly not going to do that, so, it, it puts us in a predicament, but I think best for the city is to let her retire with Dennis, and, uh, both legally and morally, for me.
And I've spoken with this all day, actually, I've spoken with him since I heard about the decision, that we could get, uh, a lot of guys on there, get them to the council, tell them that they can't give away city property. And, uh, I live in Charlotte, they, they have told us, and, uh, trying to, uh, review the law, come to a, uh, conclusion on what we need to do. And I don't think when the legislature grew up these statutes that they anticipated, personal property including on animal, uh, because as Chief indicated, once it's an item of property, or it's a municipality, becomes obsolete, or is no longer used by municipality, they sold, uh, public or internet option. I, I, as Chief indicated, I don't think that's a smart thing to do, it's dog, uh, with this specific training and wounds it suffered and behavior since then. Our other option is to send it to the marketing and religious distribution station of the Office of State Security, of the Department of Finance Administration, and I think they'd send it right back to us. Uh, the other is to transfer to another government entity within the state. I don't know anybody at this point that, uh, is in position to take the dog to be traded, and where Officer Wise is going, there's no need for the dog in his new current position. So, if you don't fit in any of those categories, then, as the chief mentioned, um, by where you vote the council, they can declare the property worthless, uh, or, uh, damaged, uh, only have residual value, can't be sold at an auction, and then he can drop it off in the city dump. So, none of those makes sense, and I think sometimes we have to use our common sense, so I'm going to go out on a limb, and if we give it back to audit, it will be in the mayor's name. More right back to the city attorney. Yeah, just more right back to the city attorney for giving the advice and my recommendation, if all Chief's recommendations are valid, we retire. What are your options, sell the property to that?
Auction, you mean, auction.
That's, that's if you would deem it, like, if you had, you wouldn't want to sell as effective dump truck, right? If you had a dump truck that two thousand, break down, now auction or?
Waving the auction and bidding and sell it to Officer Wise for dollar.
Can we, I don't think we can do that.
I don't think so, I think you have to do the public group, they're going to auction, they have to advertise, and it'll all be news.
Does that remain since the last dog we had? Or, has that been changed since the last dog we had?
Yeah, so I didn't even know that we had retired the last dog, and we got it also, we'd retired before, but, uh, they have changed this ordinance, and it goes into the, uh, this statute, goes into the statute of rights, so, I was hoping that they had changed the calculus, but they really didn't, just being a dog, so. Like I said, I just don't think that the statute anticipated animal, so, I think you use common sense in this situation. We just need something, though, official or citizen.
Well, the dog.
I think, I mean, one of the options is, if you look at it, and we don't, none of us want to look at it as a piece of, as a piece of equipment, but that's what they're paying us to try to do with the statute.
If, if you look at it that way, and think, okay, this is a damaged, uh, this, this not affecting in our current situation for us, not, because we wouldn't take, like I was saying, we wouldn't take a dump truck that you thought was gonna malfunction and cause damage to someone, and auction it off, or sell it, or you'd just take it out to the dump and say, look, this is damaged goods, uh, you know, I think it'd be silly for the mayor to walk out to the city dump with the dog, without, oh, Officer Wise, and just go, oh, I found this dog, and, you know, but that's essentially the same caveat of what we're saying, I mean, we don't think that, that, that Kena would make an effect, a, a good pet for a different owner, for the reasons we just outlined, we don't think she's effective for us, without Officer Wise, uh, I think you got a piece of equipment that's not good for anyone or anybody else, right, except for us.
Well, I'm just the opposite, I'm, the dog, and he just said that, is an officer of the law, so we don't go through all this whenever a policeman retires.
Sure.
And the dog can't come in here purely about getting a lot, so, we're the dogs that will do it.
Yeah, that's the other, that's the other thing, as you were saying, it's, but it's an officer, it's retiring, you drove the party.
Yeah, we'll speak for him.
See, I don't like the way he was, yeah.
Why is the dog with the special circumstances, we respect it, and I think that.
So, Mike, can we make a motion to blaring the dog obsolete, you know, no longer serviced, decreed with, and, uh, put it in the charge of Officer Wise?
Okay, good, good.
Okay, well, I make a motion.
Yeah.
I just said, I made, I made a motion to, to give the dog to Officer Wise, and give, to give him special circumstances, and we'll, I mean, we'll take.
I withdraw that.
Kind of what you said, but you just kind of put it all.
My second, thanks.
We have a motion in second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Officer John?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniels?
Yes.
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 Thanks. Thank you, thank you, Chief. Officer Kena is not here, is that correct? No, no, sir. Would you like, I'm coming up for just a second, Officer Wise. I'm not trying to show, but I, I have never personally thanked you, and, and for what you do for the city, anything, and, uh, it's important to know that I would hold the dog hostage if we thought we could keep you with us. But, uh, thank you so much for what you've done, and God bless you for everything you're gonna endeavor, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. We're losing two great officers, and we have lost.
Well, thank you for your service, officer.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Department of Health reports and questions for the council. Sorry, I have, we have lost a merchant, that's all. I didn't add him myself, I gotta look everywhere. Uh, number fifteen is, I know you think it's lots, this has been a topic for a long time, and we, uh, Simon Wiley, Director of Street Department, said in on a, a attorney's, um, seminar, as he will, I think it's from, uh, Mr. Powell, Captain Powell, who's chasing Little Rock, attorney, here, for things that, how to take care of this, and how to maintain these lots, and how the process of it, and we continue to work on that. One thing that I, the reason I put this on here, I just wanted to, kind of get the, the council's opinion, I don't have anything official to have my vote on or anything, but we, we, I talked to, what's Chase's last name? Carter, turning out Little Rock, and he, he gives a whole seminar, all right, wait a minute, Mr. Lejeune, if you don't mind, real quick, if you'll step forward, sir. I need to give you one second. I would like to congratulate Mr. Michael Lejeune on his appointment to the State Board of Architect by the Governor, where it's determined five years. Well, yes, can you mow yards?
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's just an ongoing thing, I just want the public to know that we're working on it, trying to figure it out, I, you know, I kind of struggle a little bit sometimes with the fact that I don't like to make people mad, uh, but, you know, I get, that's why I'm in the position to try to make some decisions and do some things. Someone pointed out to me very clearly, I think it was either today or yesterday, it's not about making that one person mad that hasn't baked a grown-up lot, it's about making all the people happy that absolutely around it, and, and I, I totally agree with that, we need to be able to forcefully get these things done. We have discussed this last couple of days, with Officer Ricketts, trying to figure out a way to do this, I know Mike's sports on it, and I'm ready just to go out there and do it, and, and really, I know, and next year's election year, but anyway, we just need to get this, we just need to get this squared away. One thing that we came up with is that these lots that are being mowed, you know, the street department has to stop what they're doing, whether it's the maintenance guys or not, they're, they're not able to, to pave roads, or work on drainage issues if they're out mowing, so I asked, uh, Mr. Carter about what, does it make sense to even consider hiring an outside agency to do that? We've had people come to Tammy's office and ask about that, and to me, it was almost a cleaner way, they go mow it, they turn in an invoice to us, whether we ever get our money or not, I don't know, but we have, we have a slip to say, it, it costs a hundred and fifty dollars to mow this lot, uh, and then we turn it over to, uh, those people and try to get money back. Or, to do what we've been doing, and try to figure the cost according to Simon's guys stopping what they're doing, hauling the equipment, the fuel, labor, all of those things, so, he, he said it didn't make any difference as long as you do it, kind of what I think is how he answered me, so, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, if you liked us to pursue hiring outside?
I'm guessing the parks guys are as busy as the street.
Absolutely, this time of year, it's, they don't, they, I know this for a fact, because I was there, remember, several years, they don't, you don't stop mowing from dusk till dawn, and, and we have a considerable amount, and, these are repeat offenders, but this is what kind of gets me, is, you know, we just have property owners, whether they be out of state, or here local, that just kind of ignore. I don't think we've ever been forceful enough, whether it's fine, or whatever it is, to make them take notice.
There aren't any ordinances, there isn't.
There is, and, and it all boils down to.
And the ordinance says that if we pay to do it, we'll get the charge here.
Right, it does, uh, and, and it all kind of boils down to unsightly by the mayor, or his pointy, which I've tried hard to tell Tammy to go look and make her decision.
I'm out, they're horrible.
But I, I just kind of wanted some backup, and I feel I have backup, I just wanted.
You say, Mike, and you saying that, but there's nobody there at all?
Well, not necessarily just that, vacant lots for sure, that is an issue, and then you have the abandoned homes, abandoned as in no one's lived there, uh, for, yeah, they're foreclosed on it, a bank in California owns it, and so sometimes it's extremely, as Tammy contested, it's extremely hard to get ahold of anybody that even pretends to care, much less does care, uh, so.
We got this one, elderly lady for three years, so I don't know that she's ever understood anything that anyone was talking about, and finally got resolved, kind of in a half-hazard situation, so, we've done something, but we've not, but. I have, um, Jackson's, uh, ordinances they use, and North Little Rock Opportunity Program, that he provides for, uh, with the terms, for North Little Rock and more, bringing the problem. for North Little Rock and more, bringing the property deed. But I will talk to somebody together to, to the next sixty days or so, for you to actually work out. But I do think that maybe hiring the outside would be easier with it, do that, as opposed to pulling off city employees and do that and try to calculate. Because kind of like our, pretty much information, we're keeping our money on that, I don't know how much time is good, trying to figure out how much we actually still have interest in, copy, paper and so forth to do that, but that's, you're kind of tied to that, this, yeah, regardless of that.
If we choose to hire outside people to mow, does that really get into any situation and all that, right?
I wouldn't think so.
The cost, I guess, then.
Yeah.
We don't have a budget, so that's-
My, my comment would be, and I'm all for the mayor, just hire local guys and I'm talking about Greenwood City Limits guys. Because nothing's gonna pack them off more than seeing some Fort Smith guy go down here and mow and, like, paint yards for the city of Greenwood, when these guys operate in Greenwood every single day. And we got guys that operate, and then in the Greenwood City Limits, that take sales tax and have privileged licenses and maintain their contractor's license.
So on that note, you said that I think that both, there is no budget to do that with.
I understand, I think there's no budget, well, there's definitely no budget, but I also understand that I think, uh, Mike confessed to this, that sometimes the wins are just dismissed, and we may never see the money until, so this is money that you're gonna put out there that you're largely likely good that you're not gonna see. When you're more gonna pay someone like Mr.- But we're likely paid the same amount right now, I'm just kidding, Rich, uh, neither side is-
Mostly Simon, I think typically does most of all of those, I guess, you're not, you're not paying him a part.
You have, you have other ideas to talk about, to teach them, to, to even recruit them, even, um?
I-
Once we do the mowing, then we have a bill that we can present, and we present it to the landlord, because the landlord has thirty days to dispute it. If he doesn't dispute it, we follow the records, we link up titles. And then whenever they transfer the title of the property, so I'll cut it.
Can we hold the charge in what the bill is that we pay, or is there some way we can add fifty percent on it?
Good, Joe Mike, uh, we, we're under, if we listen to her the same hours, we can administrate those things, not mistaken, am I right?
I spoke to the Little Rock attorney, you said that you, you, um, set your price and you pretty much doubled it for administrative, so she would have done it. I don't know what's, I don't recall, but there's orders, I know we have orders in that area.
Well, I mean, you'd have to do something to get these people's attention, and if I had a seven hundred and fifty dollar brush hogging bill, I would think, hm, I can hire Joe Mexican of our state of Bob bill, whatever, to mow it for two hundred and fifty dollars, so, hm, maybe I'll do that, I don't know.
I propose you hire outside folks, local people.
And how, how, how are you gonna decide which local people to hire?
Well, that's-
Because, you know, there's several local people, and you just call the first one and say, okay, good. And I, I understand we're gonna put out the deal and say, I'm here.
To your deal, I think if we're gonna use local people, we're gonna have to put it out and say, look, we're gonna have, we may have X yards. How much would you, you know, we may call you to know these, you know, what are you gonna charge to do it per yard? Or a blanket deal, like, well, when you call, we're gonna come over these yards, and then one from the hand, you build five of those. You know, that, that type of deal, because you're right, and that is a bunch of people that would-
I mean, I, if, if you're asking outsourcing, yeah, absolutely, that's an outsourcing idea, but I think the process of outsourcing it, make sure we're not stepping on a bunch of toes and making a bunch of people mad and playing favors-
I think Williams has got a good point, though. Get a list of the local contractors, company workers charging, make a good business decision.
I, I like, well, you know, the police department, uh, we have a rec and it's, uh, you know, they need a, a record service. You know, they just kind of have a-
A list.
A list, and it's a, just kind of a revolving, you know, the next one in line.
We could probably give, and you're right, there's a bunch of them.
My point is, you might get, you might get X that closes for forty bucks, well, then you might get X that closes for eighty, so, but if he's credit, we'll go. Look, just, we may have ten yards, just ten yards a month, you know, use that just for a random number, say, what kind of blanket price are you gonna give me to come over these ten yards when we call? You know, we, X address, can you move it, when in the month, and they say, yeah, we want some money. Call us, we'll come over these yards, and we're gonna give you, you know, four bucks.
I like the idea of making those, doing a rotating list, because this, if you did it that way, too, the problem is, is it, then it's, you're like, man, that lot needs to mow it. And it needs mowing, it needs mowing, you're calling, and they're saying, I'm gonna get to it, I'm gonna get to it, and then they're backed up because they're, it's got swamped. If you have a rotating list, you can just call and say, hey, we need this boat, I need it, can you do it? No, next guy on the list, and, and you just, you just put it out in paper and say, hey, we're taking names from other law yards and, window time for people comes up, their name on the list.
Well, I think what's important, though, is that they have that permit, that license to do it.
Yeah, no, I think that even if you just beat some, you have a, it's a moment.
She can provide us with that list of people that are licensed.
Yeah.
I've heard those licenses already.
Yeah, okay.
They're long here.
And, and as word got out, if somebody else, they come in by the, like, all this, okay.
Or some of these would have to be able to brush hogs.
That's true, yeah.
A lot of these, some of these lots are-
Well, at least you just go down to it and say, can you manage it?
Right, yeah.
Just give it the best first.
I know, I know two or three don't brush hog, but I know one that does, so there, there are those, that are, that are penalties there. And I, and I sure don't want to depend on somebody with a push mower to do something that needs to brush hog. Okay, all right, that's good, that's helpful, that's helpful.
Feel not mugged.
Well, I-
Oh, yeah, the money coming out of the fire department, oh.
I can come back with a resolution, right? Where the money comes from.
You have money, you can put it in for mowing now, right?
Not in, not in-
Um, not really.
There are people in streets, people in parks, but it's not specifically-
It's me for private property.
Yeah, yeah, we have a few out there.
Yeah, I mean, we may be- Okay, we'll get to that. We'll bring your resolution.
As, now, for the repeat offenders, obviously, if not more than a yard or taking care of property, uh, what we still gonna proceed with the whole send letter out, wait for them to rectify it, if they have it, I'll turn it over to the street department, street department. Or what we're gonna go, you know, here's a-
I think there still has to be a process.
I think, I think it still is the same thing, that you don't give it to the street department anymore, you give it to Tammy.
And we, we call- With the new process, you'll be contracted out of it. Now, the, I lost my train of thought there.
For the repeat offenders, escalation, kind of process?
Right, I mean, you know, we have some guys that go away, what, what happened is I'll send a letter out. You know, they won't mow it, and they won't mow it unless it's in a letter. Soon as I send that letter out, they'll wait until the last day, then I'll take care of it. Same process, so we're all very good. Uh, I know it's, I know we're done legally by the ordinance, they're, they're taking care of it, either rectified, however, you know, we're planning, that was active, you know, they're pushing each story.
Well, I think it's gonna help, Dustin's not here tonight, but we'll, we'll put this in favor, literally, exactly what our plans are and how it's gonna work. And, and I think, I don't know, maybe not, if I was a property owner that had several lots around town that were kind of repeat offenders, I would not want a, now a bill from Bill Smith's mowing service to come from the city. And I guess we'll bill on our own, right, Mike, we're just kind of representing, we gotta be reimbursed for our-
We would want these mowers, these dealers, a credit bill, date of service on it, address of service, all that, that you can attach to the bill as a copy for the invoice, just like you do in-
Right.
And do a copy of the letter from something already, or what they're working for.
Right. Now, for the, for the ones that already been taken care of by the city, we go ahead and proceed with the bill. Now, some of these properties are owned by, you know, if you gain, you know, some are owned by the state. So, I mean, it's a lot of different properties, different people, a lot of properties are owned by people that don't live in the state department, so they're living in, they're, they're gone. We've got a snatching with, uh, recently, because, you know, this isn't the same, you know, first time, this is, this is a second, third time, you know, within the past year. Repeat offender, they get mad at certain letters, they expect a phone call, but I don't know who they are, and so I'll get there. I'll get to talk to them, so, but, so what I get to go with is looking towards having contact down.
I think so. Good?
That's good, yeah.
Sure.
That's good.
All right, thank you, Officer Ricketts. Thank you, Councilor, number sixteen, with animal shelter agreements.
Vote on that, are we gonna vote on outsourcing this, or are we just gonna do it?
I can use white for resolution, I think, you know, if you'll come back with-
Glad you were speaking.
Oh.
Sounds like you're agreeing to do it.
I, I just want my ultimatum.
Okay.
All right. Yes, sir. Oh, animal shelter, shelter agreement, hope in your packet, I think you have a copy of it. No, sorry, no, would you mind, Tammy, would you mind making copies for somebody?
Fire waiting on that, I talked about.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Gray was unable to be here tonight, Michael had surgery, one of our officers, it's White, that's opened up the count. Uh, some time ago, they purchased a count outright and had all the equipment. With his intentions and hers more so, so we heard business, opened up, they played a boarding, uh, place for people going out of town. Uh, him and I were talking about our difficulties we had with finding a place for dogs. And well, ahead of their schedule of getting this place done, they, they put it on the fast track after talking to me and then talking to the mayor, about building this, they wanna build more for the city than anything to get it done. And, uh, we certainly appreciate that. She wanted to be here tonight, like I said, with Michael, had a rib removed and a back muscle and shoulder muscle. And he's gonna be out for some time, and he's on morphine, and I don't think he's gonna be able to, it's-
The method is, but, but it's getting him.
It's, uh, Michael Gray's wife, one of our officers, and they live out on the Washington mountain.
What happened to him?
His, some, something's pushed him down, the doctor may go, I think, going on his brain complexes, causing his arm to go numb for some time, due to some complication, uh, when he got in a fight with somebody and home digging fish and filing, wants to get it taken care of. I don't think they discussed with him with the lengthy, uh, recovery that this, uh, cooperation takes. But, uh, it's at least a three-month recovery, so he's coming home for some time, up to two years, uh, the way his doctor tells him.
Okay, so now you have a copy of the, uh, this is an agreement, like Chief said, uh, Michael would come in and visit with us, and I gave him a copy of what was our, uh, agreement with Fort Smith, Sebastian County Animal Shelter. So this is kind of, uh, roughly close to what, what we had in there, the amounts, the amount, eighteen fifty per, per day is the exact amount applied, which, Officer Ricketts, there you are. Is that correct? I just thought we were gonna be paying.
That's what we would pay the, uh, uh, Humane Society, was eighteen fifty a day, uh, per animal, per five days.
One of the, one of the biggest things about, I'm not sure where it is in there, but it's, it's, we are priority instead of the other way around. When we were dealing with Sebastian County Humane Society, whatever was left, we could, we could, just he made me of priorities on his, his cell. I don't know that it absolutely covered everything we needed to concern, but I know, I know, Officer Ricketts had a question about the eight dollar per vaccine. Did you get an answer today on what they were expecting coming, what, what all vaccinations they were needing?
The vaccines would be, uh, like a six of one vaccine, COVID, COVID-19, stuff like that. Uh, I believe it's just gonna be one shot, one or two shots, no quote on that, um, still gotta figure it out. Now, that's, as of right now, that's not, it is not mandatory to have them. Um, while discussing with, uh, Michael, uh, but of course, I will reach out to him, sit down with him, I can, or his wife, and discuss it further. Uh, as far as I know, there's not a requirement for a kennel to have certain vaccinations.
He's just maybe covering, making sure that he protects the population that he has there.
Correct, and that's something that, uh, you know, I discussed with, uh, Dr. Singer today. If I pick up an animal, you know, because we don't wanna cost it any, you know, stray that's been out for, you know, months versus a dog that just got out today and wherever he sits. Uh, if I pick up a dog, it's healthy looking, it's got a collar, doesn't have tags on it, though, you know, good chance that I'm gonna find him over that day or the next day. More like, I'm just gonna take it to Dr. Singer's office, keep it there, and we get the dog back to his owner. Uh, now, if I can't find him over, I'm gonna end up taking it after you. So dogs are gonna end up out there. Uh, the whole vaccine, back, I guess, vaccinations to help it kind of cover, plus the vaccination panels for this city's flooding.
The only question I have, I get, so I guess two questions. One, there's third paragraph, I guess, it would be, it says, it's responsible to the city to take back any custody of animal that has not been claimed by its owner after the five-day holding period.
That's correct. After the five-day holding period, if no one has come forward to take the animal, or nobody wants to adopt it, I will take it back. Uh, Michael has me, at Dr. Singer's office, and take appropriate actions to, to, to.
Okay, and you are licensed?
I cert, I am certified to take two, two, eyes.
I guess the second question I had, I think, did you say that Michael's, our police force now?
Yes.
Do we need to get a warrant soon?
We would have to do the same that we've done.
The rod levels?
The rod levels. That's correct.
That was a rancher, is that something weird?
What, what is their capacity?
Um, that is unknown, I'm looking, right now sixteen, possibly, uh, holding areas, um, which is sixty more than we had. That's correct. Right now I have four.
This says they're gonna vaccinate all of them to show up.
I understand that, but I discussed that today with, uh, Greg.
I'm not sure if that's gonna stay that way.
This is, that's just so long as it's safe for the staff to vaccinate.
Right.
If we're trying to catch a bobcat and vaccinated, that may not be the same.
Well, I'm saying, we're, um, according to this document, we're gonna go for eight bucks for it.
They can catch you vaccinated.
Eight bucks is a, is a one-time thing for vaccine, uh, for the first day and at that.
Unless the owner's found, would they?
Right.
What I'm saying.
Yeah, but upfront, you're right.
So it's about a hundred bucks, it's about a hundred bucks for the sock. If you get an animal, it's gonna cost about a hundred bucks for the five-day holding vaccine, and then you can make, you can make, you can have it, that's really good.
Animals that, you know, there is, like, you know, still turn animals away, how to turn an animal away today on somebody's property, they got cows. I asked the, the Jason cows, I said, no, I scanned it with my chip, took a picture of it, went on Facebook, if I'm the owner, I, I don't leave there. Now, they're mad, they get cussed out, yeah, but it's the main side, but I think you call a truck driver, and they're all day long.
I, I think this is, I mean, I don't think, I know that this is the best that we've had, that, you know, since we've been in the situation we're in, so. Not, not that it's perfect, and not that there wouldn't be repercussions behind that, if we go, I, I feel real confident with the person that we're talking about, being able to do that for three issues. And technically, the facility is not ready today, right?
Right.
Still have to roll the check.
Still waiting for it.
So, uh, it is my-
We're beating around-
Check boxes down here.
Okay. You gotta say a city worker, or the control officer.
Well, every day, and-
On more of a day, I think, I'll think that.
I, I, that's what we talked about.
You can't miss a check, see?
First, you're a question.
You can't miss a check.
I mean, I would suggest tomorrow, too, if you're visiting, you said, if Ross breaking on vacation, and something happened, I may want to take it. Love you all, so, no, wait, that says work with that, I'm not part of that.
I guess to talk to, uh-
I think if, if, if you, anybody else besides me, must be cleared through, either the mayor or the chief.
Sure, yeah. I agree. So that word that I could see couldn't merge for him, right, that day, whatever you go with, it's a habit, you're a-
Oh, okay. He, or his appointee, he appoints, he doesn't, he-
Well, however, means, like you said, he's go through you and chief police, whoever's-
Right. Uh, there you go. That's the other thing, you know, budget, uh, I mean, yes, I mean, I suppose, but for the general fund.
Or not.
Where, where's the money going?
Unless complete.
We have ten thousand, but.
You do?
That's what we, that's what I, you know, that's what I, we'll be using the same funds I'm using right now for animals. That's right. However, I might need to be resolution later on down the road.
We use, we use that till it's near.
I spent five, uh, five hundred twenty-five on one animal that I, uh, was taken from somebody who didn't take care of. Obviously, those four, like it'll be, uh, that funds is restitution back to animal, you know, we go back each to the fund. That's not always the case. You might have fellows out there, they hold for a while and end up disusing it, and I'm out that way, you know, waiting for the restitution back to me.
Do you think he will be finished with this facility before next month? With, with the change or, or?
So Tim's, Tim's saying that you're on the acceptance strand from citizen fire approval from the animal patrol officer, not citizens.
Well.
You want to strike that from there? That's just.
They're, they're.
The world will be paying for whatever I want, someplace, the best city.
We're, we're striking this one about acceptance.
The bottom two need to be struck.
Oh yeah, the bottom two, yeah, it was, I'm not sure why. They were on their original.
Well, that is something that he could use about the line if he's going to, um, say, go out another town.
Exactly. If, as long as we're not paying the bills, so, somebody was picking up a stray dog and taking out there, there's more power to us, the city's not paying them, right? Eighteen fifty, eight dollars, you know.
Yeah, so.
Obviously, their business, they, they.
Agreement with that caveat, Tim's out.
Yeah, I second the motion.
The strike, the bottom two, is it?
Yeah, but on the city worker, I think you need to designate, except animals from city worker, uh, with approval from animal, you just don't want a city old city worker grabbing the animal right down there and stop talking.
Well, I thought he said approval from either.
I would say from the mayor's office or the chief.
I don't know if you want to say, because I'm not just a city worker. Yeah, strike the bottom two, change the language, change the second.
Do we need to add wording in there about, wording about bringing it back and euthanizing it?
I think that's already part of the call.
I have to know that.
As long as we hold them, real caveat is we can't just do it without, you know, five days for somebody to claim.
We have to give a chance to get the animal. Now, there are other people who do adopt, uh, somebody ever that I have. And with that, Dr. Singer has took it upon himself to have a, uh, he has contacts, you know, weekly or monthly. People, you know, gets something, they put her, her cash into the jar, they pay a dollar for her gas. He puts that money towards a spade, uh, that he has with his office. Animals I bring in, you know, good candidates, get the dollars now, something like that, if somebody adopts it, they'll spade it or that, and it'll get out. Okay, by law, animal must be spayed with the dog, not with.
I think one of those, the big push for registration, a lot of these would be handled early, if you walked up and saw the dog or, or scanned it, I think.
Is there a way, is there a way to require, like, if somebody comes to claim a dog, is there a way for us to, at that point, enforce the registration?
Oh, yes.
So we're, yeah, they're built to do that.
Anytime, anytime I pick up an animal that's not registered, they can, cannot provide proof of registration, they require registration for it. Just also with, uh, rabies vaccination, they can't provide, provide proof of rabies vaccination, it will be vaccinated, they will, they will not make the animals. There've been a couple times, people threatened to come into Dr. Singer's office and just take the animal. And of course, they won't, uh, believe, and I used to show up and tell them, explain to them, it is for all, they had to have vaccinated.
Do you still want to use Dr. Singer's office as well?
Dr. Singer's office will still be utilized, like I said, you know, if I pick up an animal, good chance it'd be, you know, just dug under the dens or like that, just run around homeowners or working enforcement or whatever. I'm going to take it to his office, uh, go scan it, take picture of it on Facebook. Normally, Dr. Singers or the other veterinarians are pretty good about recognizing them. Uh, they say yes to everyone or clients, uh, they'll, a lot of people will call, maybe catch a dog.
Kind of staging there.
Correct. You know, if I can hold an animal, you know, Dr. Singer's office for a chain or two, no luck, I take the box to his.
Are you, so you'll transport him to Washington Mountain?
Correct.
If, uh, Gray's won't come again, you'll, you'll take.
I'll transport him. If there's still, uh, a box program, that's how they get to his, so.
Appreciate you staying on top of this.
Yeah.
Looking for alternatives. So we have a motion to second?
We have with the, with the changes that Cheryl needs to read to you, if she's understanding.
The changes that I've noted are to strike the bottom two, accept the stray animal portions, and add two, the second, except animals from a city worker with approval from animal control, homeland, mayor's office, or people's police.
Yes.
That's it.
And eventually, we'll need to get a resolution to be able to, you know, business with the little, city employees.
That's correct. Family.
That would welcome.
They're buying. Without, without. Do we want to clarify, obviously clarify the whole vaccine, they can vote with the perceive with anyone else? I mean, I don't know how.
I think.
For you decided that you do.
Well, I think, are you agreed to as it is, if it remains that way? I mean, the best thing could happen is if the, that they don't require.
Correct.
So what you're agreeing to is that we do pay an dollar for it on every animal?
For the vaccine?
For the vaccine.
Per vaccination of, you know, like I said.
They're going to, they're going to put vaccine on every dog, it's, the new marriage wasn't needed.
Well, that's.
Or we don't have proof, you know. Every one vaccine vaccinated wants to.
To protect their, because they're also, you know.
I, I think it's best because if, if one dog, if I just won it, but an owner said, oh, that was my dog, it's chipped and everything, it just got out from there, then they might, they may have to go through a series of treating their dog, you know, I think it's kind of cheap.
Well, the rabies vaccination is, uh, does only come by a license background, so if we're, if I can take it, I would have to go get it, break down, down to Dr. Singer's office, have the, the vaccination for rabies. Other vaccinations can be given. Uh, he could still pick up rabies vaccinations as co-op, you know, to your animal's hours, not break down.
I want to talk about, when they go to pick it up, they do have an animal, there's other fees, pickup fees, transport fees that will be attached to that total fee when they go to pick up the animal. I understand if it is a complete strike, you know, it's not, I consider it as, oh, it's, it's kind of wasted or whatever, if it's going to be euthanized, you know, after five days. But I still think it's just good insurance in a, in a kennel situation when you have other dogs.
Yeah, they, they've got to have that to protect themselves, I think, or their business will figure out.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion second. Is that still carried with, as she read it? I don't understand any motion.
Yeah, I did. I think I made a motion second.
Do you second?
I will, I'll second.
I don't think anybody can. All right, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Is it in?
Yeah.
It's here.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Number seventeen, so thank you, Officer Ricks. Number seventeen, Fire Department, uh, transferring fees, permit to you, I think.
Uh, Mayor Council, Mr. Gray, hand me this, our resolution we do every year to move the, uh, fees for fireworks stands over the fireworks. This year, we have four stands. I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion to second, or for second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
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 That's your reason?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Number eighteen, Command Center ordinance, or competitive, waiting for competitive bidding.
I went to, uh, I, I, that's my paper ordinance, the fireworks stand.
You haven't been saying anywhere.
Questions, comments?
Looks like we're waiting, uh, competitive bidding on something that's already been filed out.
Yes, that's correct. That was my mistake.
Can you get some of this donated drug seized?
That's what it was used, uh, what we used to purchase.
That's a question that we can listen to. Because, uh, from what I've known, and I'm a deep ox, square iron, it's also a statute that came up on the ground now, and I've called three different entities, and they all said the same thing, that it's accepted that this is the only fund that the city council doesn't have that authority of. But, I can't find it now, my family can't find it. I don't know what to do.
I feel, I feel like that's more correct.
But I don't know where, ask me, I don't.
Chief and I, Chief called, uh, red bill, I think, at Fort Lauderdale, right, today to get his thoughts and opinion, and he didn't miss them. Sir?
And the chief of North Lauderdale.
Fort Lauderdale. I mean, they handled that fund, they, they certainly make counsel aware, and they handle a lot. They make counsel aware of the price and of the purchases that they don't ask permission, and they, they kind of treat it like what we've been doing, I think, in the past. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm.
Isn't that worth?
Here's my only thing to it, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the dog, you're saying, my only thing is, is sometimes when you take something and you've got other costs associated with that, that come up, that we have to, that we have, because I mean, I don't want people to insure that money, their money's not paying for that insurance, you know what I'm saying? That, that type of deal. I mean, I don't have a, like I said, I don't have a problem, what, if that's the way the rules are, but I'm just saying, you go buy something, there's other costs associated with that a lot of times, you know, that's going to come out of his budget, we have to take into consideration, so, you know, that's, that's the only thing I was going to say about it.
And now, especially since general funds are, you know, most relevant for, and, and what is, and also, that. Oh, we've been audited, you know, all these years, by legislative audit, and we've been this way the whole time, and there's a thing, so it must be a thing. I'm just.
I have a problem, and I really don't, I just, my thing is just, you know, having the quarry, adding expenses, they don't.
A lot of trucks that pull this thing, but, you know, we're going to pull this thing around.
I pull it, um, that's where, front wheels about. I'm not on table playing, I, I, I'm just joking. Yeah, I mean, I, I do need a truck, in the worst case scenario, I'd ask for a budget next year instead of a patrol car. And I also look into fleet pricing and, and, and possibly trading my Tahoe, the, the Cadillac offset part of that pricing. The reason why I say Chevy is because of the lock and differential, that I think that we need, and that's the only truck that provides that. Uh, the, the foot draw on the trailer and competitive bidding, I've searched for two months for something that could fit our needs. Put this outside TV box, and yes, reviews for whatever, she was born square, the kids came up, played PlayStation, and we talked to them, but I also have a laptop that we hook up and use the phone for hotspot, pull up maps on the outside and, and do our briefing right there on the outside, because if we have a search party, it's going to be a large group and fit the trailer. So we can use that TV on the outside to, uh, do our briefings and, and, it just fit our, our players will fit up inside of it, and I fully believe me when I say, anyone police department say, I've been looking for two months. One I found that was almost exactly the same, uh, one in Texas and this one in Oklahoma. And the day before, I said, I wanted, I was interested in, and he said, guy walked out of here with it yesterday, and it'll take six months to build another one, if you want something like that. This guy had custom built this one for an idea that he had. It's just unique that I didn't find any pretty nice things in such two places. And I jumped on it, went down, and still thinking about it, and waited, competitive bidding, and I said, that was my fault, and I take a little responsibility for that. I got excited when I seen something that I think was useful to us, and I, I jumped on it and, uh, and involved, and it was with the drug seized funds, that and then you generate.
Yeah, so if you want any money out of general fund, you're right. Right. That's where they're at here.
I mean, it is in the general fund, it is a DTF fund, but.
Want to make a very, very.
We're moving out of our.
When I was hoping to vote, we had a whole conversation, if you research it, in no way can this take away from your regular budget. Matter of fact, I seen it talking about it, and next year you decided, well, there's ones in there, they can do it, it's illegal, will take away from us, and we'll be in trouble. So I was trying to avoid this conversation, but now that I have it, you looking into it, and that's why city councilmen don't get involved in that fund, because if you take action to take away funds that generally would have been approved in a budget, then we'll be in trouble. And that's why councilmen don't get involved.
We've talked about this before, saying, we've had this same conversation before, where that drug seized money, we, you know, they should never come into city conferences, and then, because, you, well, we might need to borrow five hundred out of it to pay for something else.
That says it's supposed to be a separate fund.
Okay, that's how the city conference is, it has to get attached to ours, like I remember.
It says in there it's supposed to be a separate fund.
Right.
But you do, you do need to have the ordinance, though, because even though, um, the accounting procedures and so forth are pretty different, I mean, you still have the rules that govern purchases that require any competitive bidding, so.
Yeah.
My opinion is still be passed this ordinance.
And I don't have a, I gave you a report of what could use the funds for in the last two years, and I have no issue with doing that anytime we need it, every time we make a purchase, and then explaining, and I say why, if I need to, uh, I try to use that fund to purchase things, I don't have to convert it with the fast funds, or, they all been important things, so you've got, and the plans in store for future, for now, the equipment that goes down, such as taser, we replace five, uh, but, I mean, it's, if you look at the funds, it's not things that, uh, I'm just getting, uh, stick those things for the police department, or use for things that, that we use. Uh, we're, we're putting together our special reaction team, and, and we purchased rifles this year for that. Uh, those guys we start training, that we told the guys that have a SWAT team, county SWAT team, to build our own county team, to be able to respond to things here in the city that I think we can get to quicker than, than county SWAT team can. And we have animal guys that are previous military, have experience, I, I think that's going to be beneficial. But everything, uh, if you have a question about animal purchases, I'll, I'll explain them. And I, I gave the mayor a sheet of things that we can purchase out of money, uh, anything by overtime we've used in the past for drug investigations, gun purchases, and commandos.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
First, you can pass it on.
Second.
Um, at the end of this, um, are we, the statute about the funds of these?
Motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Officer Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Daniel? It's here.
Yes.
That's here.
Yes.
An ordinance waiting for competitive bidding, and a closed trailer to be used as Command Center, please department, clear your minds, and for that.
A question by second, third?
Second. Motion to second, wait second for review.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
It's here.
I don't know if you were hoping on the way to franchise that on the highway.
By anything else, Chief Brown?
Presenting recognition that he's been a second term or second year as the president of the office of the lady who came out here.
That is a good honor.
That is.
Thank you for.
I would like to say while I'm up here, so a friend of mine has seen it today. I don't know if you got a saw, I said, not even John, and uh, they're going to be.
Where did you get that?
We don't know.
You were out. You're right. He was actually almost out of the building back when we back in.
Well, good. Well, that's a big honor and uh, we're actually probably, uh, the fire marshals are giving him about a little team into the Arctic to relax. So it's been a little bit better by the same fire marshals, so. How about more general.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, do you think we report you? Can we report, uh?
Questions? We have the physical business test tomorrow night. Uh, also think I said, you may have seen on the video with the greatest girl that enforcement is coming back from England. He put his notice up there enforcement. So he's coming back, which is great. His previous knowledge and previous servant here. And we'll take two candidates from this whole back end fitness testing tomorrow. And I'll do interviews by next week if we get. As you know, obviously, Ben Swizer left. Kate Holmes went back to school full time. She starts again in August. She decided that she wanted to be on the back straight to finish her degree. And uh, just to ask enough, it's going to be hard for this part.
Yeah, promotion.
Well, it's, it's like really more than an award there. They live just down the street and uh, he was going to be closer and I think there's a few more things to it, but.
Which you promoted, then to you.
And Barling starts out, I think, he's going to get ready to come in there because they start out at fifteen dollars an hour or fourteen fifty one.
All right, thank you, Chief. Appreciate you. Uh, Mr. Riley. I don't think they have anything for you, so.
At all.
Mr. Bell.
I got something else that I don't want to hear from you.
Okay, I thought you might.
Uh, y'all got a word in private. I wanted to talk about some exciting things that uh, go on in Greenwood, uh, thanks for this, no meat, X ninety nine. We're going to look at the uh, hopefully the approval of preliminary flat for the overlooked subdivision, which will be north of Maple Ridge Heights and they will uh, when finished, they'll have a hundred and eighty-five homes uh, in that property. We are looking forward to working with people and uh, this is property that uh, as you'll remember, is going to require a water tank to supply the uh, uh, the homes up there. They have a agreement that they're going to uh, build that and uh, the water commission, Tim, is looking at uh, the old figures, they're redoing the old figures of a lighter Coleman that is looking at them to see if that included an addition to what they feel like they're going to need for those properties to give uh, you know, the other areas around there some additional water, trash, or tire protection. But uh, also on that uh, uh, we met this morning and approved the uh, preliminary of Casey's convenience store. It'll be located on uh, Center Street across from McDonald's. There's two lots there, next to uh, the coffee shop. And they are purchasing both lots. They're going to remove the house that's on the west uh, uh, property and make one large lot out of it and uh, so that's an ongoing process to. Our project uh, out on the uh, east end of town, the uh, uh, O'Prefair is completed and like the mayor said, uh, the Dollar Tree uh, looks like they're going to make their projection of opening in July and uh, also the uh, the uh, entire fitness one that Monday they'll be up running. So we've got a lot of things going and uh, one of the canyon on Union Course of scenes, McDonald's, they, they took that thing to the ground and then dug out some underneath it, so.
Any update on? First deal out there?
I haven't talked to Jacob in a while. I don't know if the mayor, if you've talked to Jacob?
Uh, I have not spoke to Jacob in a few weeks. What was your question? I'm sorry. Is that there? Well, he cleared, he, thanks to the uh, fireworks tent, he did clear more after he raveled out and everything. Uh, not really. He, now he came in and brought his plan in and we kind of looked at him and shared a couple of things. He actually approached the fire department and the possibility of taking some of that land from him and that, that just didn't pan out, but. Well, well, for three. Hopefully four, I think it works, but. No, I don't believe in any updates of it. I mean, I think he still plans on doing what he's doing, but it's just, I don't know where's that on.
Sonny, you remember we passed something several years back about digging up hill sizes?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's approaching. What does all that say?
Let's see, erosion and uh, grading and erosion ordinance that we passed and that was uh, was subdivisions, big subdivisions and uh, projects like that, but uh, Jacob's not in the city, so we don't. He is not in the property.
I mean, I'm not saying.
It's basically the ordinance was for uh, like a subdivision where uh, so somebody had a house and somebody else at the hill start clearing the property off and train it out on him and, and uh, like, you know, reduce destruction and things like that.
It wasn't just electric, that is just random, just driven mine from the side of the hill before it rounds out, we were trying to get all that stuff.
And, and it's an ordinance that we need to look at again because there's some things that uh, it doesn't cover that it should and uh, we now have to be making a little more stringent.
I would, I would say that maybe, I don't know if it's not up to us just yet, but we, we have been in discussions with Jamesport Water regarding uh, Jacob's property. I've been trying to work out some, something to bring up between us and Jamesport and I think that's kind of a stalemate right now. I don't want to divert anymore from them.
Right now, I don't know if we're trying to prove or trying to find out exactly what they had in ground there, they weren't sure and.
I ran into Donnie Sanford, he did a best and he, I asked, I asked him if we could not sit back down and work together. He was all, all for that. Some, a few things worked out a bit more. I think, I think Jacob, one of his problems out there is whether it's Casey's or somebody like that, he's not, he's not far enough along for anybody to really buy off on that road, so. And, and he not knowing himself about the water even is a tough question.
Well, it's all take, you know, the, the vibe person's the right man because who would have thought Casey was picking two blocks from.
Absolutely.
Uh, this is when you just say, basically, it's sometimes like, wow, you can not beat out of here with Jacob, he's just up in the case. That's what the tractor supply, they wanted to be in that corner and then Casey comes kind of halfway into town and uh, you know.
And who knows, the way they built the bar, they make sure they'll have their own Jacob too.
That's true.
Well, it's practical, like I said, a lot cheaper to go.
Is, is that was a new construction or is it a renovation?
Basically a remodel.
Yeah, a remodel, it's since we're on.
From the ground up. Water, water, like, they all stay the same and then, you know, I don't know. I'm still fixing my head on that, you know, but you think they, they were lucky to save a lot after they got a few of its land. They were digging down, down below the foundation and everything else, so.
If everyone blew their arc out of that, they're going out to Denver.
I think they're cutting, like, construction road through there now. They haven't said anything about making that permanent or anything else. That way their, their equipment can come in and out of Denver Street uh, without coming down main. Now, we need to look at that real close as far as the road line, because they're, they're moving dump trucks and things like that down already uh, injured uh, Denver Street. We just got to do overland part.
We're looking at permits for remodeling, does any of it include that?
No. That's strictly the street department, but you know, if they were coming out on the state highway on Pennsboro, then we, you know, they'd get concerned, but since they are turning and coming down Denver Street and that, that certainly does go.
We're.
Never found the best shape in the end anyway, and you start out, uh, out rough up and down there.
But a building permit, just coming in here for a building permit, new construction or renovation in one, it doesn't automatically subject you to the bond or tear the streets up?
No, that's uh, uh, basically the street department's function is uh, they go out and they uh, look at the uh, permit and they, or example, when we had the well out there on Mount Harmony, uh, Don Key went out there and he photographed this back for, you know, cell phone or whatever, but he just, he just photographed uh, Mount Harmony all the way up to the, the wellhead. And they, you, you figure what would it cost to replace this road from point A to point B? And then you bond them. And after they get through the project, then I go back up there and keep looking and if there's not any damage, then they're, they're good to go. If there's holes and things like that in there, then they fix it and, and then they're good to go. But it's kind of, you know, just protect this uh, our street park.
That's not what you.
Yeah. Uh, the point to bring something up about that, that some needs to change with that, that bond, the whole deal, because they're doing construction all over the city and I'm not being made aware of these projects that are happening. These trucks are coming in, they're tearing up our roads and they say, well, you should have gone, well, I don't want the construction to go off. I think the planning department is handling that a hundred percent.
Also, I was asking if that's not part of that permitting process on the front end because if they tear the street up and we go out there a month later and they go.
Yeah, but you know, not all of that goes through the planning department. It's just like, if you go out there on Homer Street and, and Better uh, Bridge right now, there's not a truck coming through there all day long, but, but they might be going, uh, somebody might be building something out on Northane and they're taking a shortcut through there with planning department, doesn't know anything about that. Uh, you know, like I said, you go out there, you hear, hear that all the time, they'll come right up Main Street, uh, they'll come in on the highway, turn up Main Street and have a little thing and uh, you know, we don't know where they're going or what they're doing.
Well, that was my next question is if you told Donald, you had to have a bond, where's that now?
Well, when they came in and, when they came in and uh, got the permit, the uh, the construction road was done in the, in the plains.
So they, they just did that, is there a property we know that?
Yeah, there's property.
So we didn't, we weren't made aware of that road?
No, there was nothing on plan.
So we need to figure out, or I don't know, there's something the police, we made the, I don't know, obviously, we got paid or not, but they, we bonded out the road up there where they built the new school.
Did you have any hauling permit or something like that?
Well, that was supposed to have been repaired by Johnson or Missures or whoever was in charge of that. Anything was wrong with Daisy or Houston, both, we're both going out, I don't know where we got anything back from that. You know, that, it was, I don't know for sure, we addressed getting that bond.
So, so we need to fix maybe the process of the sound, how, how that works.
We probably need to deem the streets, no, no heavy trucks to that permit. And then police pull them over and say, do you have a permit? Well, part of the permitting process is you get a bond, whatever.
See on Over, Over Street has a sign that says, you know, it's Tony Flint, but they ignore this, they just come down over, make that corner, you know, and uh.
It's still a dust.
Metal bridges, it, you know, you can tell where they're going around the corner, the bridges have got uh, sunken places on both sides of bridges, the bridges are cracking, you know, these are going to be some major problems there.
Well, they're ignoring it, it's not be a dust to enforce it. And that should be the police pulling them over.
Mayor's dairy, I'm, I'm, back when she was, but that, we talked, there was an incident back out of Deerwood that was going on and Joe, I think, when I put that, are those signs uh, that all bring, come in force or bring it already?
I don't know, but that was, was a hauling permit and what they did, they came in and said, well, we're going to move some stone out of there, come be one or two loads, we have to come up like that, so they got a hauling permit and then come to find out they're running out there every day or, and they're knocking bridges down and everything else. But, you know, one that we had up there at uh, uh, Stone Bridge, uh, the life property on the cul-de-sac.
Right.
You know, they pulled that road up.
Yeah, we're stuck with that. I mean, that, that's going to be something, and I tell you, the, the residents up there have been more than patient and now that they, I think they did call your office or somebody and said, finally, now that they've heard through the grapevine that particular contractor's in, in some trouble, they want to know if we can downress that street. I get you're right, it's gone, it's, it's destroyed.
And, and, you know, we went, we talked to them several times and.
We'll have to, we'll ask all, what, what this day, we just turned those trucks.
Oh, yeah. And they were moved.
Were they built, tripped in there?
What were they doing?
They were hauling dirt out of the, the cul-de-sac up there that, that goes up to Bill Park where they were digging dirt out there and all of it, a lot of it went over on the other side of the creek.
Didn't have any kind of permit for the city to dig dirt off that hill or?
And told them, you can't be doing that and they said, okay, we won't do it anymore than you.
And what we failed to do, and I say you, what, the prop, we didn't follow the procedure as in going out and looking at it, taking pictures, getting it registered, how it looked and then doing the same thing when they get through. And I think that should fall back, I don't know Simon May not want, but I think that that part of it has to be on, you know.
We don't have a couple.
Yeah, well, but getting, go ahead.
To, to address that, I went over this week, last week, and I started videoing all the roads and the city kept that on you. They keep a record of all the streets and.
I mean, just you gotta have proof of what happened.
The area out there that we were talking about, they, you finally got along with it and shut them down because of the runoff and, and the disruption they were doing to the hill and all that, then they had to come back in and put all that rock up there. And that stopped that, but it doesn't, our, our road is gone.
Is, is there a way that, that Simon is aware of any permits that are coming in so he can be, I don't know.
This is very simple to me, like, we, we give out demo permits, okay, for demolition stuff, like, I forgot one for McDonald's. I mean, he had to come get that from Don, did he not? Well, since I've gone, compared to Tom, uh, call Simon out of curiosity and say, hey, look, I just issued a demo permit, but using my common sense demo, even let a truck somewhere and quickly, so. But communication to where Simon knows and then maybe we can.
It isn't fair to be knows because he's got, he's got to look at it.
That's what I'm saying, but I mean, if Don could.
Yeah, we all knew McDonald's coming down.
You know, I'm just saying.
It wasn't even worse than it was, Bonnie, we hadn't known about it for a while, we still didn't have anybody in the road model.
But we certainly didn't know they were going to come out the back.
No.
I'm just saying, even in town, maybe they're demoing a house or whatever, speaking to demo, I mean, nine times out of ten, there's going to be some dump trucks involved.
We have our share of dump trucks.
So I'm just saying, I mean, I feel like there's a lack of communication.
And you know, if, if you've got a project that don't take a couple of trucks, truck loads, you know, do we bond them at that point or are they in and out?
On them a hundred percent?
I don't know. You got a moving van coming in to bond it, you know, we don't know that they're coming in town. They, they show up and they back up somebody's house and, and uh.
They roll it up, they go pay for it.
Well, you, you are, I mean, you can't catch everybody but, but having a better system. I think we'll, we'll get together.
That's the problem, it needs to be, the system needs to be taken care of, the procedure for, for out here in half, like you said, it's got to be that easy. Everybody knows it's going to get a permit, there will be a, get a permit to rebuild it.
Even build a new house, I mean, if, you know, some of these lots, I mean, they have to be built up, so they have to have field, shell, whatever. So I mean, can be one of the jobs where Simon can get that phone call from Don, say, I've got this issue of permit for a house out on such and such, you might want to go out and get the streets.
Point in cases, in, in the Oak subdivision, did you, did you repair that when you came on? Right before you, there was a section of asphalt road out there that got destroyed by one house, probably in and out, in and out.
Well, for example, on top of the Hill Edition, the last house built up there got over three hundred loads carried up that, that hill. They, they came through Middle Road, went up, turned on and went up the Hill Edition and, and brought in dirt. Uh, you know, I went to, I went to Joe several times. I went to Joe and I said, Joe, you just replaced that in a second, Joe, those trucks are going to carry it up. I said, you're going to notice that it's going to start leaking and if, you know, this asphalt is going to be moved and you couldn't ever get anything done, you drive by there now, it's a rainy day and it's weak, you know, and it's going, it's winter time, it's going to freeze, it's going to break up, it's going to be back before we started. But uh, that gives me an idea, you know, three hundred loads of uh, rock and dirt that went up there.
Here's why I think that planning department needs to handle things, beginning and end on the trucks, just because even if uh, uh, Don was the contractor to say that he issued a permit to so and so, I would have to track, track that person down to try to get a bond on the, on the, on the road after the fact. If it was taken care of at the, at the moment that he purchased the permit, then everything would have been taken care of, you know.
But you gotta have proof of what, even the bond, if you, if they're bonding the road, we gotta know what, what kind of shape it's in before they start it.
We got to know the value of the road.
Yeah.
And then after it's over with, we got to know what the value.
Right. I'm, I'm with you, and that ordinance that's there does say that, that, that either you or your appointee or somebody going, and maybe from, I don't know, I can't remember how I reached, but I, I agree with you, but we gotta, we gotta know.
All of that work has to be done before you. You're ready to get the bonds out.
I think when they come in with the dirt, maybe there'll be, there'll be a system involved or we'll go out and we look through that, at that time.
Yeah.
And look it over and where it's, it's one stop thing, where we handle everything.
But I think at a minimum, when they come in with those permits, we should know that the bond required. This is a requirement, the bond. They have to do, it's work to figure out the value and so forth.
We need to make sure. Are we in agreement that we have a, already have an ordinance that tells us that, that we can do that on any, any, any construction, remodel or not?
Yeah, I.
Okay, we'll, we'll, tomorrow, I mean, I agree, I think, I think we just got to keep up our procedure.
Hey, Sonny, I had a question. On the overlook.
Yeah.
So the overlook's going to be the first subdivision that's going to meet our current law, so you have regulations and our canopy preservation ordinance and our.
Green space.
Green space. And we'll be looking for pre-development water flow, so we won't have the problems we had with Maple Ridge where the guys at the bottom are getting flooded out for the guys at the top.
Plans show right now three potential bonds and, and we're going to run them. The drainage studies are too many to make sure that one of the grid facilities, they won't break with the sand up.
And as far as going back to bonding, when we did Oaks, they just said we have a bond, Steve said, okay, and we're going to make sure that there's bond and the bond is capable of taking care of if they went broke in the middle of this.
Yeah, and, and too, you know, that's something that uh, falls not into the planning department, we can go out there and test this, these, these asphalt, I mean, that's, that's something that's good for the street parks and uh, that apparently is what happened at the Oaks was it wasn't tested right, it, it was a, a thin layer of asphalt on a, a clay bed. And as the uh, dump, the trucks going in, it's for the future construction, kept running over the thing and all of a sudden you have a sink covered.
So is this something we need more ordinances or laws on or is this just something needs to be handled within the.
I'm pretty sure something needs to be handled better, you know, I'm, I've done it before Simon and I don't think that we'd have that problem with Simon here, I think he, he has the knowledge that uh, so they're not going to fly by.
So in our master street plan, it gives thicknesses and, and testing how the hardness of the banks and all that, so.
We've got uh.
Or that's there.
Yeah, our, our master street plan has all that information and again, with this expertise, I don't see us having that followed anymore.
Will we break ground with this overlook?
Uh, we just looked at the uh, preliminary flat, yeah, and it, it's just that portion there looked at the pouring and, and so it'll go through the planning commission and I will tell them, you know, here's what the department did, said that, you know, everything looks all right. And then they will come back to us with a construction plan. That plan will show where the sleeves are going to be in, across the street for the water and various things like that. Then we will meet, the department head will meet with the engineers and the owners of the subdivision and we will go over anything and everything that uh, we, we feel like it should be addressed and go back to the planning commission. Once they approve that, it'll come in front of you guys and I'll tell you, you, your book, the planning commission has approved, this is what they were recording in and pages or anything like that. And once y'all approve it, then they're ready to dig phase one of them. We're not going to approve the uh, four phases. We did that with King Mountain and, and uh, that's, that's about happening. Orders has changed, sidewalks required, now they weren't required when they started and things like that, so we're going to do this phase by phase, but.
Our sidewalk ordinance and our canopy preservation ordinance are separate ordinances from the subdivision regulations, right? And they'll need those.
The water tanks will be bonded, but the blood first bore child?
Uh, we talked about that this morning and before they start building anything, the water tank will be in place.
So they're going to put the water tank up before they break ground?
It, it could be done at the same time, uh, Dr. Johnson, but uh, they are not going to be able to build anything because they can't uh, provide water to it and so.
How big is the water tank?
I'm not sure what it is, uh, Tim is working with the uh, Michael Wagner Coleman took their old figures and they're redoing them and then once they get through with them, they will go with uh, Sheriff Short and have him verify the, the gallons or whatever they, they have to do. And then uh, the, the water tank will have to be approved by us, but they just can go up there and put a big plastic hood and say, water bank, you know, and be filled for our investigation, so.
And those have got through the water to you?
Yes.
We make sure Main Street gets bonded, they're going to use that, they do.
Yeah. And again, the problem, I'm pretty good with you. If you don't believe that metalwork.
That's something we may need to address too, if you don't start bonding this, it's a little graphic you're using wherever.
That's, that's part of the bonding.
You know, usually only X, you get called X, bring you the ticket.
Yeah, that's part of the bonding, you know, that here's your roof that you're calling it, it'll be present. But you know, most of the road lately, that's a natural road and all of a sudden you're using it, you know, the, uh, main thoroughfare and it just doesn't look.
I guess only clarification, I'm, I'm back to what Ross showed up, there, there will be a bond on the cover of that phase one, so they look at, and even, I guess what Tim said, to the water tower. I just want to make sure, because I mean, I know like Rob and brothers, the, the Oaks down there, that was kind of.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to make sure though, that phase one is bonded like.
This, this is the project where the city purchased and built that pump, that went with a tower with a tank and we did our part and the other guy says, well, I'm out of it, he left, he didn't want it.
So you've got the plans for phase one of the subdivision that's going for the planning department, but you don't have any plans for a water tank yet?
No.
But you can't start the subdivision because of water.
No, not.
Seems a little like we got a car before the.
Big one, you're talking about this.
Uh, they're learning. They know.
Talking about Brad, you know, he, he's not the one that needs to know, you got the wrong guy.
She already knows.
Brad's not the one.
Yeah, that's what that altered name.
I can assure you.
We have to give platting for being built this thing, what, what you, I will sue you. How's that sound?
No, we don't have, is that what you're saying? We don't have.
I'm kind of like Dr. Johnson, had got a, had got a water tank, I mean, it wasn't having, I mean, I don't understand, they spent it with the planning commission, but I mean, I've been with the water commission, but that's been a real sore for us on certain things because that water tower was going to have to be big enough to, because that's the one. Yeah, that and, and the fire flows and all that stuff and I mean, that's a.
Well, remember this is a preliminary flat. All that is, is a square on there and here's what we want to do and a water tank coming up there.
We've been in this spot before and all of a sudden they're thinking, oh, there's brown, ground getting broke and phase four sitting over there.
We got to say, he can go up there and break ground.
Well, he can, he's dozing down, that's his property. But you can't. I, I, I want to assure you as much as we can that this, this particular subdivision has got more eyes on it than probably anything that's ever been done.
I can tell you from the years experience of sitting up here.
I know.
You know, a whole year.
Well, you know.
Absolutely, so we've already, you know, it's, it, the plaque was brought in and the preliminary was the first time ever this morning at our director for department head meetings when. the first time ever this morning at our director for department ed meetings, when seventy percent of it to them, just to say, here's, here's the very first thing we got. And everybody looks at that and realizes it's, it's as preliminary as you can possibly get. But to your point, absolutely, uh, and I've, I've already told the Joneses myself, you have to present the water tank. We gotta know what that is and what's going to be and, and get it through.
There's going to not be anything that's started until all the departments sound off, water commission says go. Mark says go, leases go, streets is go.
That's, that's a way, that's a way.
Process, they start, we start this morning, absolutely.
Well, that doesn't seem to have happened in the past.
So. But I wasn't.
So that was the first time they tried to talk about building that division, that guy from California.
Yeah, you were on the council back then, I would imagine, uh, factor, Gary Campbell's, uh, uh, tenure, and, and like I said, that's when they made the, deal to build the two things with their contract or.
Daniel, if you remember.
Uh, Michael remember that too?
All the engineering was done, it was all put out. And we'd already accepted the contract for the, for the pump station that going into Bell Park. And we tried to pull that back, we pulled out the water tank, we jerked that out. And right then, we were trying, yes, we were trying to, to cram everything into the last of the bonding. All the little, and I think the line that went in front of your house got crammed in there. And then we'd already put up for bid that tower and that pump station, but we'd already accepted the contract on that pump station. We tried to pull it back, the contractor said, yeah, you sold it back, it'll cost you fifty thousand dollars, and we said, go ahead and finish it up. We pulled out that tower that tried to get that, some, that kind of.
That's why I heard just.
There's a lot of things that are getting thrown in there that would benefit somebody in the long run.
But there was also a lot of complaints from Hilltop residents, it's one of the.
Yeah, I understand, it's a way of being all over that hill. Well, and too, a lot of the things that were decided on the first time that it was brought up, like bunker zones and green spaces and things like that, that the Hilltop people finally said, okay, that's, that's okay with us, those are still in there. Now, there's some other things that we got to look at, but, but, uh, you know, behind the south hills and, and all that up there, it's got a bunker zone, and there there are larger lots, and that's what they asked for, back when that go had it, or Clearl, Dano, or whatever.
A hundred, a hundred twenty thousand lot.
Yeah. And like I said, there's three detention ponds, and I forget how many green spaces and all that. Uh, it's, uh, some, uh, easements there that could be used for trails and, and, uh, also some entrances over into some other property for future, uh, development, so. Like you said, it's, it's going to be an interesting run, because, uh, like Tim says, you know, this is the first one, we've got all the ordinance that's in place for, and, and got stuff about it that's never done before, so, so it's going to be interesting.
We got, uh, this plan in there for people, lot for stations for anywhere.
You what?
This plan for any lot here in the city for station four?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we can, we can work that out, I mean. Northside.
Lot, lot further north than that.
Oh, no, we need a north side.
You further over? They're talking about this whole swath area between.
Yeah.
Make a bridge in it.
And two, two of the roads from Maple Ridge will continue on into this, um, so that's, that'll look around and, uh, give us, uh, you know, like, they have freeways, you can either get into the, get in and get out of that subdivision. For seven and Maple Ridge and then whatever the, the main road coming off of the gas well, put your freeways into the subdivision.
That's what it was. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I want to read something to you, counsel, real quick. I'm, I'm excited about, although it doesn't mean anything in the next few days, but it's starting to mean something. Dear Mayor, close, please find copies of minute orders relating to your city, which were adopted by the commission as I asked you, and should you have any questions, comments, please call. And the second page is, whereas in Sebastian County, the city agreement with state local officials have expressed concerns about east-west traffic flow. And whereas the agreement by that study was adopted by the commission in two thousand and seven. And whereas state and local officials have requested that an additional auto alternatively study as illustrated on the attached map. Now therefore, the directors authorized to conduct an updated study to determine the forward feasibility of a bypass around the greenland. So this is signed by Scott Bennett, it was passed on April twenty-sixth, almost immediately after we met with Mr. Bennett in Little Rock. Did he, uh, process this, if you will, and get the folks to sign it?
Turn that side around, as we get.
That is armed, the map is referred to as the map that we gave, yes, Mr. Daniel, Captain Daniel was with us, so. I, I got to visit with Mr. Bennett, again, in Fort Smith, just a couple of weeks ago, I guess, at a luncheon. And I cornered him, he's starting to run the other way when he sees me, but I asked him, told him not to forget us and to see what we need to do for him, and he said, nothing involved, it isn't our court, and the study has begun. The only question I had, and before you ask, we're not, we're still on the list, we're not removed.
Counselman.
No, obviously not, we made sure of that, of the widening process.
Please will make sure we, that will stay on this.
Okay. Actually, we should have an end, very soon. Uh, but, uh, I asked him to abandon it due to the fact that his school is out right now, and technically speaking, we don't have a traffic issue. We still have the issue of a bridge running out, that sort of thing, safety issue, if anything ever kept us from going to the other side of town, we had our service issues. And he assured me that that study would continue on through school opening, uh, there's nothing, there's no way they would ever just look at it during the summer. So those numbers that, traffic count, I don't know, so just wanted to keep you apprised of that, that they, they know we're serious and, and, uh, we're just keep working on it, and we see, and I, if any of you have a chance to put a word into Mr. Bennett, I think that would be a good thing to do, whether it's an email or just a page. Don't forget us, we're, I don't think we can test her too much, he doesn't act like we can. I just want to make sure that we weren't knocking something, he said, we're, we're good to go, we're good, I don't know, I mean, he, he basically told us, I think, a year probably to get the, that study done, and you got to start some of the other process, so. Anyway, uh.
Shouldn't take a period of time.
Good, right, yeah, it'll all go to score in the plan. Uh, that's all I have, if counsel, if, if the counsel forum are, are attending.
This is probably the easier to answer, but this asset forfeiture fund report is the chief of police. I just saw this way near my pile.
Oh.
All this area? That's where you come out with that. Well, I see.
Yes, sir. Okay. Good.
I know all of y'all have been frustrated with anticipation, when I'm going to bring this ordinance before you, dealing with the, uh, city attorney like we did with the clerk of the mayor, so plan on having, myself and Mike are working on it. On it, and we'll try to have it next month. And it's the ordinance that's going to deal with, uh, you know, uh, an outline for agreement duties and expectations, pay, retirement. And it'll have a, I'll put forward a pay increase in there, so, you know, you can just be expecting it. And, uh, emailing or texting me or just calling us.
I think that's me. Twice, I almost know. Okay, thank you, uh, which reminded me, as, as Jamie, I'm sorry, uh, we'd asked, or I asked last time, I didn't think to call you, between now and then. We were, I asked you to check on, uh, any new laws or anything regarding when we need to have a ready for a special election or have any type of, mainly thinking about annexation issues.
I know, but I'll have it for tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great, cause we, we need to be on our toes, not miss our, certainly when you put something on, I think we're all looking forward to to the annexation part, very excited. And Mr. Bell has already turned over what we had talked about over to Mr. Braxton, correct, to get that back.
Would we be able to send out smoke signals and maybe have a plain flow with a banner behind it, letting everyone know, like, we're about to annex it? I don't think we splashed it enough for a year and a half last year, and that was somebody didn't know about. They had a sign in our office that said, vote against it. I just want to make sure we, smoke signals, whatever.
This department is proud owner of, uh, Drone, so maybe.
Drone.
Drone. Anything, Burke, to the council?
I'll make a motion with Derek, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have a motion in a second, Derek, if you are dispensed, thank you very much.
There you, you had to sit through that whole thing?
Do we push stop? No, we got to. That's what happened.
Oh.
I don't know what, what. Hopefully it's all right.
Why was that, why was that?
We had to push stop on the front at the end, and it was still recording.